There's shortage and it keeps growing. Anyway, thanks everyone for coming. I'd like to introduce you to Jason Vingaro. He's the new head of the new engineering firm that we hired. I thought it'd be a good idea to introduce you all in to have Jason stop by. We had gotten some of your proposals and so maybe like, you know, well, we can do an introduction. I'll let you sit around the board or they can introduce themselves and then maybe just go over the process and how you work things, where the information comes from, how you come up with the numbers or whatever. And I think, and whatever else you'd like to say about your firm. So, starting on this side, if you guys want to introduce yourselves?
Hi, I'm Lynn Miller. We've met.
We've met.
Frank Murphy.
Steve Lohr.
How are you? How's it going, Jason?
Good. Thanks for having me here tonight and thanks for retaining our company. We, when we first met before we were selected, you had indicated that there was a bunch of projects that you were looking to go forward with, you know, fairly soon. Some work at the wastewater plant and some work that was going on with the water system and then some work right here in the downtown of the village as well. And we met subsequent to that after we were retained and went over three things specifically that you guys were looking to do sooner rather than later, let's say. The first one was some work over at the firehouse to evaluate and see how that building looked and whether it was worth investing more money into it and what else needed to be done in the short term, long term, and so on. A couple other things you asked us to look at was the Garden Street paving job and also to look at the Fishkill paving job and those, that was a little bit longer term project that you had asked us to look at. We also met separately with Greg from the Water and Wastewater Department and went through that whole system on both sides and what's ongoing there and what things he's hoping to do in the future, even though he's going to be moving on, you know, get his sense of what needed to be done there to maintain the system, at least in the state it's in, if not improve it. So there was a bunch of stuff that we identified there. The most pressing thing that myself and my partner Darren, who's not here tonight, but is more of an expert in water and wastewater, was the de-watering in that operation that's going on there. It's a costly operation, no matter what municipality you're in, so it's an important function that's not often identified early on because it's the end of the waste stream there. So that's something that I think we'll have to get looked at going forward. But immediately we submitted proposals for the evaluation at the firehouse and the Garden Street paving. And along with the Garden Street paving proposal, we prepared a cost estimate that we included with the proposal. So the idea was to give you a sense of the cost of the project before you get knee deep into it. And to me, that's important too because I don't want to be spinning my wheels or you guys wasting your time with something that you're not really comfortable going forward with just based on dollar amount. So to identify that cost ahead of time gives you the opportunity to say, well, is this something that we really want to do or is this something that we can't, you know, do at this time? Garden Street, Garden Street is actually a little bit easier probably to estimate the cost for than say like the projects at the wastewater treatment plant. Garden Street is a street. I can measure it. I know how big it is and a couple of things with estimating regarding Garden Street. One, the way we do estimates is we look at the quantities and some things are quantities based, some things are lump sum based. So stuff that you can measure like square yards of asphalt, that's quantity based, square yard of sidewalk, the amount of milling that has to be done there. You know, I had a brief opportunity to walk the road and check out the condition and stuff. There was drainage down at the far end, but there's no other drainage in there. The estimate included some additional drainage, additional set of catch basins and piping to tie them in as in addition to the replacement of the catch basins down there. You know, if you're doing a big improvement on a road like that, it might be worth investigating, including that stuff in there as well. It may not be necessary, but you know, I'm trying to show you the higher end cost before we get started instead of having it snowball later and then again, we're not in a place where we feel comfortable completing the project. To get the numbers that go into that project, we use a couple of different things. One, highway and paving and those types of numbers are pretty easily ascertained because DOT keeps a running tab of projects that come in that are bid. But what we'd like to do to get a more local feel for things is to use prices that we've received on projects in recently for other municipalities in the last year or two that are similar items or similar scope of work. And then we'll use that cost that was once again bid on a per unit basis, making sure we weren't talking about a 20 mile stretcher road, that we're talking about a, you know, half mile stretcher road or whatever is analogous to this project. We don't, you know, there's a scaling factor in things too. And that's how we derive the cost for that. There's some other costs that go into a project too that are not quantities based, like a mobilization cost, which is to bring the equipment to the site and to get the job rolling for the contractor. There's costs for bonds and insurance. All these projects are public projects. They need to be bonded. They need to have adequate insurance. The village needs to be protected, you know, village residents need to be protected. We need, you need to be protected in case the contractor doesn't finish the job. So there's a lot of stuff that has to be obtained by the contractor in order to go ahead and even to be eligible to bid on the project. There's a bid bond that he has to put in place before he can even bid on the project. So all those things add up. So that's how the Garden Street cost was derived. And again, I might have mentioned it, you know, that cost is probably, I'm very hopeful that the cost is higher than the ultimate cost will be that you'll pay, but I don't want it to be lower because it's just not, I don't think it's in your best interest for you to have an unreal expectation of what the cost is going to be for the project.
So you said that there's catch basins at the north end of Garden Street that exist now. Did you say the estimate has additional catch basins?
Yes.
Where would they be located?
I'm not sure where they'll be located, but likely about, I think Garden Street's about 780 feet long, something in that neighborhood. You probably set another set of catch basins about 300 and so feet in from that road and then tie them into those far catch basins down at the, at the corner there. And that's because you see how the road is in poor condition. You know, when water gets in there, it seeps in one way or another. It's pretty flat too. So if the road doesn't have enough pitch to convey the drainage on its own, the water travels much more slowly from one end to the other. When it's not traveling, it'll seep in and when it seeps in later on, it gets forced up and it'll destroy the road. It erodes all the sidewalks in that area and all the curbs. And that damage that's done there is likely from that continued process going on.
Okay, so there would be significantly more excavation with the second drainage, the mid-street drainage than with just resurfacing and repairing or correcting the end catch basins?
There would be more excavation, yes. You'd have to, honestly, it's not too much more excavation because where the catch basins go is pretty localized. So there's a, you know, for lack of a better term, a hole dug there and the catch basins put in. Then there's a run of pipe that was going to connect those catch basins to the far ones. So it's a trench width or bucket width as far as the excavator goes. He's cutting a trench from one, you know, from say the 300 feet or whatever we established down to the next inlet and he ties those two together there. So it's not a tremendous amount of excavation, but yeah, it's a different piece of equipment on site. It's, you know, there's pipe that goes in there, you know, it's not going to require shoring, which is a protection on the side of the trench because it's not going to be deep enough, but there's some other aspects that go into that for sure.
And would there be two catch basins on one side of the street or just one?
That's how I initially envisioned it. So if this is the lower end of that street where the two catch basins are, the pipe would run up one side and connect two more, which would connect across the street and go back down and tie in.
Okay.
On what sides and how that all works out and whether they're absolutely necessary, I don't want, you know, I can't say for certain until we go out there and do some survey and get all the topography for that area and know that it's going to work right.
You're probably aware that the village had a significant sidewalk repair and total reconstruction of Furnace Street in 2016. And so all of the costs for that, and that was a funded project from, who was it from? Federal? It was federally funded. So you can find, all of those costs are located in the village files. In addition, as part of that project, the project resurf, sorry, reconstructed the entire Furnace Street length, including removing all the sidewalks, removing all the curbs, dropping the street bed down, putting in new drainage and then building up new sidewalks, new curbs, new roadbed and drainage on the Main Street side. Part of that project that was federally funded also included a bid for, a separate bid for resurfacing Fishkill Avenue. The engineering for that was done by the firm called CHA located in Albany. All of that information on that engineering and the cost estimates for that are also available in the village office. I believe there were CAD drawings that were done. So all of that, all of those materials are available to you. That project also included new drainage on Fishkill Avenue going from the intersection with Mountain Avenue toward Main Street.
Definitely would be very helpful.
So I would think that that would be helpful to them.
Yeah, definitely would be very helpful.
When Fishkill Avenue, when Fishkill Avenue is approached.
And you want to talk a little bit about the firehouse? I think that's the only one I'm wondering. Which we actually agreed on moving ahead with, but.
Yeah, just to get back to the Fishkill Avenue and the other, other project that I mentioned, that sometimes when you combine projects, the overall cost goes down. There's, you know, there's economies of scale when you increase the amount of work. So Garden Street is not a street that's long enough that would, you know, you'd mill that whole street or grind it, in other words, down in one day without a problem. So most contractors don't, you know, own that equipment. They will rent it for the day or the two days or whatever they think they need to do it. So, you know, when you add another street and you're doing it at the same time, there's a savings in that. There's also the savings that is, comes from not having to get a separate bond, not having to get separate insurances, not having to mobilize twice that when combining projects, you could realize savings like that too.
One of the things that bothered me about the proposal that I saw for, I can't remember, well, either Fishkill or Garden, we're looking at, we're at the end of March, so we're looking at April. The bid packages have to be prepared, they have to be sent out, they have to be received. It wasn't clear to me that those projects could actually be completed by the end of the blacktop season. For sure experiences is the key element in that.
Yeah, I think you have at least six or seven months before that season would end based on the last few years. So I think it could be completed, but of course, you know, you can't, you know, you don't know exactly what you're going to find until you get started. So there's no way I can offer a guarantee in that. But that doesn't mean that you can't prepare everything and get it into like you have now. You're still going to be able to use a lot of that engineering probably for the Fishkill Avenue and bid it at a later date if you weren't comfortable or you thought it got too late into the season and you weren't comfortable completing it.
So how would it work if we, if you got, if you put them, if you packaged them, got bids, would there also be an alternative for doing separate projects where they would, you know, they wouldn't include their economy of scale?
Yeah, it could be, it could be done in that way.
But you would do separate bids then?
You could do separate bids, but also as I mentioned, I might have mentioned to you Dave, that like the drainage aspects of the Garden Street project, those could be pulled out. The bid is going to be a bunch of line items and you could choose to maybe not do certain line items. The drainage could be an alternate where if the price comes in at a favorable price, you go ahead and do the drainage work. If not, we just resurface the road and do other repairs that are needed to do. I mean, it's the same as anything else. You may bring your car to get fixed and they may say you need brakes and tires and you say, well, you know, I'll do the tires this month and later on we'll have to worry about the brakes.
What's crucial there is the way the bid is structured.
Of course, of course.
So if we did, back to, if we packaged them together, there would be a way that you could separate the bids also. So if someone wanted to bid on both of them, there would be the savings hopefully. But if, once we got those bid numbers in, we said, well, we can't do both those projects, is there a way that they would bid on the separate ones or would there be a separate packet?
I think in that case, if you were only going to do one or the other based on the pricing, I would, I would separate them because you're going to get a cleaner delivery of the projects that way. I want you to be comfortable at least moving forward with the majority of each of the projects if you were going to be combining them into one project. It'd be difficult to extract more, you know, maybe up to 50% of a certain project, the contractor, you know, you'd probably, to be frank, you'd probably result in a dispute with the contractor.
I would think so.
Yes.
If somebody, if it was all on package and somebody bid on only a portion of it.
Well, they can't bid on only a portion of it, but then if you only said that you're going to go forward with, you know, 60% of the project and that person is tied up in a bond that, you know, was closing in on the whole value of the project, yeah, there's going to be an issue with the contractor or you're going to get poor, more, poor workmanship because he wants to get out of there or whatever it may be. If I could ask, the last project that you did, that FHA, the federal highway funded project, who completed that work for you? The contractor.
Contractor was contact out of Fishkill.
Yeah.
Anything else on?
We were going to ask him about fire at the firehouse.
Yeah, just like going to ask you about the fire department, just that, that little project or?
Sure. So we also submitted a proposal for the firehouse to evaluate some of the issues that are going on there and also to give some, some guidance on some other issues like the exterior. So I think what we had spoke about there was that we would inspect the building, evaluate all those conditions that we talked about and then prioritize the list into stuff that was, you know, more immediately needed to be done, you know, was a medium term things that needed to be done and then other things that maybe you're wanting to do for aesthetic reasons or there weren't, you know, immediate concern, but you should think about overall. And that will let you know for, you know, whatever the term may be 10 years from now, about how much you're, you got into the building. So you don't start investing, you know, you don't put a new furnace in for a building that's, you know, over 10 years is going to cost you an arm and a leg and it's just not overall worth that amount of money.
That sounds good. A prioritized list sounds really good.
Yeah, and we do that all the time, like, you know, it's not a completely analogous, but we've just evaluated like a bunch of water towers for both the villages suffering and the town of Walk Hill. You know, we gave them an evaluation of a couple of towers in each of those municipalities and said, these are the things that you should really do now because, you know, these are important assets. These are the things that, you know, we may be able to wrap into a project in two or three years and then these are the things that you better get ready to do over the long term. Lets you plan, it lets you understand what you're investing in and, you know, those things like your firehouse or your streets, those are assets that you need to, frankly, you need to maintain them and, you know, that's what the village is, that's the crux of the village. If you don't have those things, you don't have much.
Any other villages that you work for?
Yeah, we work for Cornwall and the Hudson right across the way. We work for town of Walk Hill, we work for town of Mount Hope, we're doing work for town of Gardner, town of Marlborough, Ulster County, we're doing work for Orange County, a lot of work for village of Sufferin. We do a lot of work for East of Hudson Watershed, which is in all the communities around here. So there's other ones too for sure.
Is there anyone as small as us?
As small as you? Well, Cornwall and the Hudson is, is pretty small as well. And you guys have both a water and sewer system. They only have a water system. They piggyback on the town sewer system. They have a pretty small downtown. It's maybe a little bit bigger than this, but not all that large. Sufferin is a pretty small village too. Yes. Geographically wise, they also are burdened because they have a water and sewer system like you guys do as well. They have a really added benefit in that although they de-water with sludge de-watering equipment like Greg would like to have here, the end product from that de-watering is a sludge and we call it in the industry cake. It's, it's what remains after you've removed as much of the water as you can, which is, you know, you're, when you're disposing that stuff, just like when your, your highway department is disposing the trash, you're paying for that by the ton. Anyway, to get back to it, Sufferin has all that sludge and it's, the county of Rockland has a composting facility where they bring all that material. So they're allowed to just, just get rid of that for free, dispose of that for free. But still, they still have de-watering equipment and they still do the best they can to de-water it and reduce their, their mass as much as they can as well.
That's great.
Yeah. And again, we're trying to make them understand too because they have a problem with copper and zinc in their sludge and the authority is threatening to withhold or not allow them to dump anymore. So we're, we actually just finished a study to evaluate why that's occurring and looking at whatever industry is in the village there to make sure we can stop that from happening because I'm trying to get the point across to them too, that if you have to start paying to get rid of this stuff, you're going to, you don't even want to know how much. I mean, like for instance, town of Walk Hill pays upwards probably $400,000 a year to dispose of the sludge. Bigger place obviously, you know, up to probably about, in general, about 3 million gallons a day is processed at that treatment plant, but, so maybe three times the size a year, but still a big number as far as your overall operating budget there.
Anything from the board?
No.
Well, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Jason.
Nice to meet you guys.
Nice meeting you.
Do they have a sign?
Okay, okay. Yeah, Darren was talking about that today. You'll probably get, who should we get in touch with? You to coming up? Yeah?
Yep.
Okay, very good. If you have any more questions on either of the other projects or you want to talk more about the water wastewater stuff, we'd love to come back down anytime. Okay? Next time if it's water and wastewater stuff, I'll be glad to bring Darren in.
Appreciate your time, Jason.
Good night, Jason.
Okay, moving on here. Next is authorize me to sign the contract Allegiant Fireworks. We're set for July 6th. The price is up to $10,500, $1,500 more. I think what happened, that's if we use the pontoon boat. So anyway, what happened when the, two years ago, we were discussing the pontoon boat, we didn't think he needed to get enough time to coordinate with the coast guard or whatever and so I think it was $9,000 at the time and then he managed to get a permit or whatever and kind of just did the, did this. I think last year he didn't charge us extra, but I think he cut the ship of fireworks down and there were some complaints. So I wrote that up to him and he said it would be an exceptional display.
So in the contract, there's a blank rain date. Do you need to specify a rain date?
Oh yeah, we should. The following day. Well, it's a Sunday.
It's a Saturday.
Did you guys discuss her any date?
It's a Saturday.
That is a Saturday.
The Sunday.
Yeah, the rain date is Sunday.
Okay.
Yeah, we should do that.
Okay.
So we need a motion or whatever.
So I make a motion to authorize the mayor to sign the contract Allegiant Fireworks for Independence Day celebration on July 6th, 19, 2019 with a rain date of July 7th, 2019.
One second.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next review legal services, the agreement with Thomas Drummond, Waxman, Pettigrew, Maly. If they add any more people, we're not going to do it. What's that? Oh, we missed one. Oh, sorry, sorry. Update on the roofing. Thank you, Brian. What do I do with that information? So I have one more, one more contract to come. I met with five contractors. The numbers are kind of all over the board. The Home Pro that did the roof for the firehouse, these are prevailing wage numbers, it's $23,500 about. The lowest bid was Roberts Roofing, they're in Newburgh. Their prevailing wage with the same warranty was $17,600 and change. And TH Remodeling, I think they're in Middletown, they're at $18,000. These are all prevailing wage and there's 15 year warranty also. Vanguard Roofing, I believe they're Fishkill, $38,000 prevailing wage. So a huge jump there. I am waiting for one more easy flow. I sent them a note asking to get me the numbers. Haven't heard back from them. I did check, I mean, all I could check on was Google review. I take, I got these names out of offline. You know, both TH and Roberts have laid, you know, 4.6 rating with 46 reviews. So there's quite a few reviews and they're favorable and they seem very confident, but that's only from a, from a one, one meeting. Those are numbers so far, I'll wait to get the last one and if I don't get it this week, you know, Tuesday, I think we should decide and go with one of them.
Okay.
If it's under 20, I just need three quotes. So we, I have the three quotes and then we can go with it. So that's, that's the update.
Would we take that out of fund balance this year?
Depending, we'd have to talk to Michelle and see if we had, how much money we have at the time or take it out of fund balance, whatever we need to do to find the money.
We need to get it fixed yet.
We have to do it.
Did they have availability?
I didn't ask them that. I think they would. It's not that big of a time. I did talk to the neighbors. One of the big issues is kind of walking through the yard and, you know, so I got permission from the neighbor to, to use the yard so they can stage and put stuff in and out, which added to the cost. They're also going to put coping, there's a concrete coping stones around parapet walls that are on two and a half sides kind of, so they're, they're going to cap those with aluminum. Also, there's a gutter in the back. We're going to replace that one, six inch gutter and run it the full distance. Right now, it's not going all the way.
What is a drain?
What's that?
What is a gutter drain?
It just drains out. Bugsy drain, put it into a, you know, a.
A cistern?
I don't know what it was. That's what came to it or one other reason.
It was one of those things.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll let you know at the next meeting where we're at with that and hopefully we'll get somebody on that. Next is the agreement with the TDWPM. These are the, this is the law firm that does our, negotiating with the police, PBA.
Do you want to see whether or not CMMR could take this on?
I don't think, is this, you know, I just didn't understand, is this actually obligating us to use them or are they just telling us that they're raising creep?
I, I thought that they're looking for a signature.
Yeah, they are, but I don't know why.
Do we have a contract with them?
No.
No, I didn't think we did.
So they want you to agree to the new price I guess, but we should, you know, we just got it like last week so we could hold it.
Yeah, I don't know why we have to sign something saying that they're pricing.
Well, it does say counsel for legal services, these 2019 and 2020, so it does kind of seem like a contract at the same time, you know, the regarding part.
So I'll contact CMMR and see whether or not they can provide the same services or if they have a recommendation.
Table that, no. Let's see. Correspondence docking request from Hudson River, Smooth Clear Water. Marie was just going over that, so I'm sure she would like to comment.
Yeah, the date and time of docking is incorrect. It's from, one of the docking dates is from May 18th to May 10th, which doesn't work.
Yep.
So we need an update from them. I don't know whether it's May 8th to May 10th or whether it's May 18th to May 30th. We'll need an update.
And the from is like, so if you're reading this, it was 511 to 512, is that right?
Yeah, that's the way I read it.
Then each one?
Right.
Okay. Let's see, where am I? Request repair a sidewalk. This is Phil Packard in from Phil's house. I took a look, it definitely needs repair. Also, his, the sidewalk is over where his driveway, so that's, that's in pretty bad shape. So I'll talk to Bugsy about that. Also like to note that Phil, maybe it's a bribe, I don't think so, but donated $200 to the Fourth of July celebration. Thank you, Phil. Let's see. Next is the request to purchase village owned property 15, Mark, Main Street, sorry. Approximately 250 square feet. It's probably about like close to seven and a half foot deep by 34 long. It's brick right now in front of that small blue building next to Argentina.
As well.
So anyway, thoughts on that?
Yeah, the owner, the notes on, on this site plan, which shows essentially 100% use of the building lot. It shows a front yard, a side yard and a rear yard. There is no front yard. There are no side yards. I don't know. It shows a front yard, a side yard, and a rear yard, there is no front yard, there are no side yards, I don't know what they're indicating here. There is no setback in the front or either of the sides, that's not the area that concerns us. The note from, the note at the top right says, owners impromptu purchase, support purchasing sidewalk to accommodate a new porch. Porch area to serve as an exterior area for assisted rescue, as defined by the two thousand fifteen IBC. I have no idea what they mean that, by saying that they're going to accommodate a new porch, and that that porch is going to serve as an exterior area for assisted rescue. Is that gonna be something that's going to be at sidewalk grade, is it going to be raised above sidewalk grade? But, so, it sounds like they're, they're proposing they're going to build something on this land that they want to purchase. I didn't think that's why we wanted to sell, probably, for people to, to build on it.
That's a good point, I, I think we should get more information on that.
I took a look at it, and, I took a look at it, and to enter where there's, to enter the door, where they're saying the cafe entry is gonna be, you, it, it's a step up just into the building. So, I imagine they wanna have some sort of threshold there, but-
Oh, what they're also doing is raising it three feet, or flood.
Three?
Not the building itself, inside, they're doing a, some type of-
Sacrificial first floor.
Well, no, they're doing a interior bathtub, I think it's, it's-
Right, right, so, there'll be floodgates, and the water theoretically will go on the bathtub. So, I, I think we need to know more about what they plan to do. In addition, their site plan shows that they're going to either remove or relocate the existing tree, which is in the middle of what they propose as the drywall. We, we don't remove trees.
Well, if they wanted to move it, and Jen said they could, it's a small tree, it's less, more like a-
No, so, they-
They'd have to replace it.
So, remove, they say, remove, or relocate, we don't remove trees, relocating, it's fine, at their expense.
Yes. So, we'll ask for the drawing or whatever of, of more information.
I have a couple of questions about this today.
One other thing, we need a survey.
Yeah, we can get a survey, I think we should see what they wanna do before we even ask them to give us a survey.
Okay, fair enough.
I mean, if they're gonna build a porch, a porch and a deck are two different things, and a patio and whatever are also different, so.
Has there always been an apartment in the back of the building?
Uh, there has, but there was an apartment.
That, what they planned, I believe what they planned to do, the way this is shown, the, the apartment will be in the middle of the current building. The current building appears to go, I, I couldn't see behind it, I could go down Osk's side yard to a particular point, but I couldn't see behind it. The building appears to go pretty close to the rear property line, so, the way it's being depicted here, the, the apartment would be in the middle of the building, why it's in the middle of the building-
I think it's on the second floor.
Second floor.
There's two floors.
Not now.
Not now, but they are going to.
Ah, so it would really be nice if we knew what they were planning to do.
So, if they, if there's, they're showing the rear yard, and you're seeing the building is against the property line, are they gonna tear it down and redo it, or what are they gonna?
No, they're working off the, the block building that's there. They're tearing the roof off.
What about the back?
I don't know what they're doing.
I can't, I couldn't see what the back would-
Looks like there's a little, yeah, looks like there's no yard.
Yeah, but they're showing the rear yard, like, ten feet, so it's on front of the-
Doesn't look like that.
Not our concern.
Until they take the building down, like, as has been done at other places.
Well, they're not taking it down.
Yeah, that's what everybody says.
Yeah, and suddenly, it's gone.
Until, until they take it down.
Kind of rotten two by four. That's right, yes, there could be some, that's some mold.
Yeah, there's a mold that he's getting at this.
So, on this one, we need to know.
Yeah, a, a design would be nice, or even a rough sketch of what a porch is, something. Yeah, design would be nice.
Okay, who, which porch were they before with this? Are they before, like, planning on H R B or anybody with this yet?
I think they're probably planning, if Stephanie hops by, we can ask her, I don't know.
This would be a change of use, right?
No, right now, well, I don't think it is.
From retail to cafe, it could be.
Well-
I don't know where that goes, I don't know if it was retail before, it was-
It was a yoga studio.
They used to sell boats.
We were talking about that.
Elabella, Bella Ella.
Yeah, that was the last thing.
Had, I thought, had, I thought, and, and they were going to be doing a cafe like thing as well.
Yeah, but this is a different owner, right?
Pardon me?
Is this the same owner?
Tim Miller, each owner.
Yeah, that's right.
And, and Ella, Bella never really got up there.
They saw the flood marks in the wall.
Okay, let's reel it back, guys. And then what, wasn't he married to, no?
Tansia Matanza, and then they had the family argument, and-
Yes, okay.
On that note, of course, they were mad because they didn't have cheese for their pasta. Next is the review and approval of doxide application, which we have to put off a little bit. Stephanie took a look at it, and since she does contracts for a living, she thought that the agreement part, the last page, wasn't sufficient, because it really didn't incorporate everything that we suggested in the rest of the document. So, we said stuff in the document, really, they weren't agreeing to, it was more like, yeah, this is some of the things, but, so, she, she sent that, I'll send it to you guys, you can take a look at it. But I just got it tonight, so we'll table that also. Next is the discussion on merit based salary increase, this was at the bequest of trustee Early.
Yes.
So, during a, during our budget, budget conversation, this was brought up as a way of increasing, instead of percent going across the boards, so you actually give the heads of departments discretion on who receives raises or not.
Based upon their performance.
Yes.
Yes.
Thoughts on this, Stephen?
So, it's, it'll be a review, yearly review for all employees or something, by the head of the department?
Don't know how it would work, it would have to be a review somehow by the heads of the department, so like Highway would, I guess, would have to set up some type of criteria or something to base something on, and have evaluations, and-
Well, it would have to be something that we would have oversight on, in terms of who's doing the vali- evaluations, and why to get the personal aspects of things out of it. So, if you have an employee who thinks that the head of the highway doesn't like them or whatever, and that's why they didn't get a review, it could blow up into something bigger.
Well, the only person that could evaluate it would be the highway.
No, what I'm saying-
I, I understand what you're saying. But how are we gonna determine that?
We don't review them, we, we have to have, like, maybe design a criteria that Bugsy would use, for example, to review the person.
Or, they would need to be an appeal process.
Or something, yeah.
There also should be, from us, some kind of a list of things, you know, do they come to work on time, are they prepared to work, do they waste time, are they on their phones, or whatever, whatever the basic criteria is, and, and, and I would say, it should be more than annually, it should be at least twice a year, maybe four times a year.
Not four times a year. I, I, I don't disagree with twice a year, but four times a year, I think is, is, is a bit much. And I think for new employees, the, the probation period is an appropriate time, the end of the probation period is an appropriate time to say, yes, full, we're gonna hire full time, or no. And certainly, annual, I, I agree with you annually, I guess we should, if we go forward with this, give it a try, twice a year and see what the burden is.
My thinking of more than even twice a year is, like, say for example, you have an employee who has X Y and Z problem, and you went his first review, you tell him about them, and by the second review, the third review, and so on, he's corrected these things, then he has a chance.
I would, I would think if you, if you have an employee who has a problem, that, something that you consider a problem, you don't wait for the review-
Okay.
-to tell them that, you, you tell them that, yeah, you're not showing up for work on time. I, I notice that you're late every Monday, and I know you go home early every Friday, that's not an accept, that's not acceptable. You've gotta be here at, and you can't leave before. You know, address that, it seems to me that needs to be addressed pretty, pretty quick.
Anything to answer, to answer your question, I think some basic criteria has to be set here. And then maybe a bottom line for the manager to make additional comments or something, because that way it keeps it more, and the employees know what they're being evaluated on, and the employer, you know, the manager knows, you know, and if the, you know, the managers can give us input into what they think, or some of the points that they should look at.
At a previous employer, I, I was a department head, and worked with the general management there to develop a review process like this. And we worked hand in hand, you know, where, where department heads came up with really specific job requirements, but then general management oversaw that, and so that was a collaborative process between general managers and the department heads, to come up with a very specific job description, but also a, a list of expectations. So, I think that would be a good process to go through before we implement something like this, otherwise, merit based increases would seem arbitrary.
Suppose I come up with some basic criteria, and circulate it, see what you think. And if you think it's a reasonable set of criteria, we go to Greg and Bugsy and see what they think.
All of our departments, just, just a quick one, were we talking about the, so the raise, we wouldn't give any two percent raises at all?
No, you could give a two percent raise.
And then it would be an additional merit, or no?
So, so, let's say we're part of the, the office workforce, and our supervisor is Jeff. And Jeff thinks that Dave, you're doing an outstanding job, because Jeff knows where his bread is buttered. And Jeff thinks that I'm not, I'm not pulling my weight. He might recommend that, because you're doing an outstanding job, you get a three percent increase next year, and because I'm not pulling my weight, I get a zero percent increase next year. It would be variable based upon the contribution that each person made to the department. And I would think creativity and innovation would be part of the basic criteria.
We could also, as a board, look at the total salaries for, say, highway department. And if we decide two percent is sort of where we wanna go, take two percent of the total amount, and say to Bugsy, this is how much money you have.
Could do it that way.
Divide it, you know, zero to three, one, you know, whatever you want, this is your budget, you know, and you can either give everybody two if they're all good, or you can give some people zero, and some people three, you know, we could, we could sort of do it that way.
Well, my opinion is, it's a disaster, and I'm totally not for it. I just think we're a very small community, and to, and to try to implement something like that is just gonna cause, you know, not a healthy work environment.
Okay, let, let me do the following, let me put together some criteria, take a look at it, and we can go from there.
All right.
I, I agree, it's a small, small community, they're very small work groups.
We have Greg, who has two employees, we have, we have the, the clerk staff, so that's two people, one part time, to evaluate-
Both part time.
Right, yes, both part time, and then the only one is Highway, right, am I missing someone?
Highway has four people.
Four people.
Well, he got four, three plus him, right?
Plus him, five, right.
Okay.
Police doesn't count, right?
No, they have their own contractor.
So, that's all our departments, then?
That's the department I would have merit based on.
What's that?
Not a police department.
Okay, you can follow up. Next, this, I, I don't know if we can go through with this, because I don't know if we got, did we get anything back from John?
Yes, oh, we're ready for that, yep, I, I spoke to him this morning, and then he emailed me, and he finds nothing, takes no issue with the contract, things to fight.
The only other problem then, since we got the okay from there, is that we really didn't advertise this for anyone that wants to come here to make comment on it tonight, since it wasn't on the agenda.
And, and we haven't had a chance to review it.
Is this the same thing that Philstown just started on?
Yes, yes.
And, and, you know, my issue with that was, as far as I know, and I wasn't there, but I know people who were, they had a number of people there for the energy thing that they were gonna be discussing, maybe not a lot, but they had some, which means the people are interested in this. And we never got this out to the public, so people, nobody has looked at it, nobody has even known we're gonna talk about it, or had a chance to look at this, and that's, you can't do that.
What's your timeline, or what?
Yeah.
I mean, if it's next Tuesday, is that the world coming to an end?
Nope, next Tuesday is fine, we are gonna try to, we are gonna try to put out the bid on Thursday, that's the twenty eighth, that's where we've got circled, so that, you know, within that time is fine.
I don't anticipate a, a vote or anything, but I think we really should let the public, you know, and we didn't have time, it didn't get on there because of-
Well, you let us know, if we can help with the outreach to let people know, we're happy to do that too.
Okay, so we, we'll put it on our agenda for next Tuesday.
Okay.
Need to have a headline in the paper, Mike.
I mean, is that something you guys would, would, would your reach, outreach go to the papers, or something, or what, or how do you want us to? We, what we're gonna do is probably just put it in the paper, just, you know, it'll be a notice, like-
Well, we could put it out through our lit, you know, just lists of, of, you know, folks that we have contact information for, and, you know, just to let them know what's going on, just kind of email or something like that, we could do it, we could reach out to the press as well, but we usually do kind of through, just through kind of grassroots.
Okay. All right, sorry, but we'll, take it.
Thanks.
Few minutes, March twelfth, two thousand nineteen, I'm like a motion to accept.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes. Under employee raises, the second bullet should be deleted, that has nothing to do with employee raises. And in fact, it's repeated under board raises. The stipends, sorry, under employee raises, there was a conclusion in that paragraph, under board raises, there was a conclusion in that paragraph, there was no conclusion under stipends. And I thought we had reached a conclusion on that.
Oh, my notes, and I looked at the video again, should David poll the board?
Right.
And then he moved on.
Okay, that's the kind of guy he is, he just moves on, okay, I removed my, my comment.
It was the video I tampered with.
I really don't know how to, unfortunately.
Under general fund, the last bullet, Michelle noted that the fund balance should be at least twenty to twenty-five percent of the expense budget.
Let me find that place a second, that's which page?
Page two, under general fund, which is sort of a top portion, toward the, toward the top. In page two, there's stipends, then general fund, and the last-
I'm just wondering, are you, are you looking at the minutes that Jeff rewrote, because those I don't have.
Ah, okay, I'm looking at the minutes in my, in the package, I'll, I'll bring that-
So, I don't know, it might be easier for Jeff to make those changes, 'cause he and Michelle had done some edits-
Okay.
On your comments, which I forwarded.
Right, I'll bring that up to him tomorrow, thank you, Michael, those are my only comments.
Michael, just, so you know, when Jeff did correct this on the voting, we changed it from four zero to four zero zero one, so it was yay, no, abstain, and absent, which is the way-
Each board has a different way of doing it.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I had Jeff, Jeff looked back at the way the lawyers had sent the vote in, and that was the sort of setup, so we just, we changed them throughout. I don't know, I don't know what is an official legal way to do that, if there is such a thing.
Could you send me a short email with it, so, or I'll write it down, it's-
These were all changed to fours, it's yes, no, abstain, and absent. He, it, what, I was talking to Jeff today, he said it used to be the box, and you could just total the boxes, but he took me, he took the box off of resolutions and votes, because he didn't like it at the top, and we never put it back from the bottom, and something to that effect, so, you got me. You got me?
Okay.
Sounds complicated.
No, really.
No, I know.
So, did you make a motion?
I did make a motion.
Okay.
Did someone second the motion?
Fran seconded it.
I did, yes, I did.
Okay, do we want to? Vote as edited or, or?
As amended.
Okay. So we'll redo that, I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
I'll second it as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
So that's five, zero, zero, zero.
That's not how we do it. I have a few other things here. One, Sue Coskian who came in, she is the owner of the new building next to Jimmy's Silver Spoon, the old Flyer Building. There's property in the front, which is grass right now, there used to be, before they tore the building down, an entry with a little porch on it on the, the west side. They need to put an entrance stoop on the upper side and on the east side. And so she was wondering how she, what she should, or what we could do for her, or how that would work. She needs the property. She needs the property in order to have, have a, to have the stoop installed.
Isn't that in her driveway?
What's that?
That's not in her driveway.
Another entrance in the driveway.
The HDRB has asked her, or has required her to have, have a front entry. So she has ADA compliance and everything on the side, and that's actually the entrance of the building. But the side, or the front, which was required, she doesn't.
So is she planning to put an entrance on the front?
So she needs a stoop. This is her property here, this is our property, she needs to put a stoop there in order to, you know, to get into the property. So everything's going to prove, but she doesn't have the property.
How did it get approved without her owning it?
Ah, that's another good question.
Why is this building two more feet back or?
This is, this is.
Move the whole building.
Why, so, this is why things get complicated. My, my comment on this was, I guess she wants to buy that piece in front of where the doorway is going to be and I'm not.
No, she didn't even bring that up, she was hoping that since she had the, as a consideration for all the extra expenses she had to do to make the place look good and her costs on the building, that we should waive a, waive a fee for, or cost for the property.
We should just give it her.
That's kind of what she suggested, yes.
Okay, let me go back into.
That's on our.
Fran?
No. My, my.
That's where I could.
Yes. When I looked at it and I saw the, the piece in the front of the door that she wants, I mean, my opinion is either you, if you're going to buy it, you're going to buy the entire front of your building, you're not going to buy like a third of it. And I think she needs to buy it either that or we have to give her permission to put a railing or an entrance on those. It wouldn't be the first Village sidewalk that has railing that belong, you know, an entrance that belongs to another building, there's a lot of that around.
Yeah, but this is a brand new.
This is new and, and in the scheme of things, I don't want, I don't want to sound nasty, but that's not going to be that expensive compared to what she's already put into this. And I don't think it should be a major problem. But I don't see selling her a third of the sidewalk in front of her building, I think she, if she's going to buy it, she needs to buy it.
I think we've required other people to buy property and didn't say because you're doing a building over that we're going to give that to.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think, I don't think they can do that.
Well, happened on St. Street earlier.
What's that?
We sold them that.
No, no, we, he was going to do something different and he, that wasn't a sale for.
He just, he did what he was, he just did minor.
Right, he didn't put a whole stoop on Village property, but he, it was just part of his bottom step or something, it wasn't a lot.
But Hartford's, in order for Hartford James to do his, we sold that piece of property, Laura Bergman wants to buy her piece of property so that she can do what she wants, I hear what's needed, so, I don't know. I think it sets a very good precedent.
I, I come back to it, it's a new building.
Right.
There was a site plan approval, there was no front doors?
There was, those did.
I don't know if there was or she's just coming to, or for whatever reason, she's waited till now to ask for a set.
I had a funny, I have a funny feeling, it was a front door, but the ADA door was on the side, but I think there was always a front door and I, this is just, I mean, I haven't looked at the drawings, I just remember discussion that there was always a front door, but it wasn't an ADA door, that was the one on the side.
And this isn't ADA either?
No, the side door is. But there was, I think she, because I remember the discussion being that the entrance to the florist was over here and she was moving the door over there. Moving from one side to the other.
It wasn't the center.
Right.
Or it was, yeah.
Yes, she talked to us a long time ago about this and never followed her. So HDRB is basically saying they want a front door there because that's consistent with, with the character of Main Street. She's not going to use it as a front door.
Okay, then, so don't do it, don't, don't, don't put a front door there.
She has to put a front door, that's contingent of her, it's the approval.
How can the HDRB tell a building owner that they've got to put in a front door with a stoop that will go out onto Village property? That seems to me is not something that the HDRB is supposed to do.
If I may give it's, at that last meeting where she came before the HDRB, she discussed signage, she discussed a railing they wanted to put on the little landing. And they discussed that because the landing's only six inches, it doesn't trigger code for, a code rated railing. But the front door was there and the, in my minutes, there was nothing about the HDRB requiring this entry. The entry was there and shown on their drawings.
No, I think on the, I think on the initial, on the initial plans, when they were discussing the whole, the initial plans at the very beginning, they need a store, they want to keep for the character that have storefront windows and, you know, so it's a storefront and also a door. They didn't want the door to be on the side, that's my understanding.
You may want to check with Al and Kathleen.
Well, that would make sense because consistently up and down the street, there's a door on the front of every building that's part of Main Street.
Wish you were back in.
But so it's only a, it's a six inch rise?
I will ask why it wasn't over approved and if there was a front door and had to go somewhere.
Yeah.
Is it only a six inch step into the building?
It doesn't show.
It's, it's sloped, so it's like all the other, like Jimmy's is six inches going from one side to the other.
You don't really need a stoop then.
Well, you need one, kind of, well.
Unless it's over eight inches, if it's less than eight inches, eight inches or less, you can step into the building.
That's it, yeah, I'm not sure. Alright, I'll, I'll follow up, just wanted to get your feelings on it?
I have a lot of feelings.
I know you have a lot of feelings. Try it once.
Yeah. Go away, I get sick, I missed a lot.
Where are you going to? We're going to ask that.
The dockside agreement?
No.
No.
It was one of the properties we were talking about, that I think was in front of her. Was it the Bergmans?
Bergmans, Bergmans is before us. Well, it was before us.
I forget what we were going to ask you about it though.
Withdrawn, said that because we advised the applicant to purchase, if they were planning to construct a, a deck on Village property, that they probably shouldn't do that until they purchased the property and made it their own.
It's always an intention, what are they putting, did they ever pick, are they drawing or anything of it?
There was an illustration, the conceptual plans that were brought in indicated a, a deck with seating, with outdoor seating.
With railings or?
And there was a, yeah, a railing, you know, sort of a, a boundary and it was up the, it was at, I think, twenty-four inches?
Twenty-four inch, oh, because the building is going up.
Yeah, right, the, exactly.
So they're going to raise and put a deck?
They're, they're going to raise and put a deck, yep.
And I think the other question that we had is, so she's showing a rear yard in this, like ten feet of a rear yard on the, on the drawing we have?
You'll have to forgive me, I don't recall that, that specifically, there was, there is a back, there was a back area, I don't remember the specific depth. And there was a, you know, illustration of how it may be used as like, sort of like an outdoor, you know, you can cook out kind of, but it was quite near the, the boundary line, the property line.
This is showing a deck entry in the back of the property, but it's also showing that the building extends from property line to property line. So it's not clear how you get to.
I think that on the east, as I recall, the east side of the property, there's a very narrow set, side yard setback between the building and the bound, the property line.
Showing no, no side yard setback at all.
That the, that the building sits on the property line, that is my understanding, my recollection.
The building sits on the property line on the east side.
But this shows it going through Lusk House, I don't think that's the case either.
This is the property line here.
I know here, but what is this line?
Oh, bits of shit.
I know, but it maybe, maybe that line isn't.
There is the carport, there, so on the one side is.
Lusk.
The, the one side is one, I think, one market, right, or the?
No.
The, Argentina, so on the, on the east side, right?
Oh, oh, one, one market. Argentina.
And that one is, I, I guess you're saying it's on the property line, I, I thought that it was just a little off the property line. But then on the west side, adjacent to Lusk, there is a carport.
Yep.
And so that, and that's, the carport is squarely on the, the property contemplating.
The property is.
And that acts, but it does not access the deck area, it's an L shape.
That's good info, but we don't, it's just not.
It's not really answering your question, what was your question?
Well, not this guy, I would just, I wanted to know what the deck looked like, she, she has on here a porch, it just says a porch.
She says, yes.
And we didn't know how high it was, if it's a deck, is it going to be, there's nothing, so I wanted to know what it was.
And the new porch is supposed to serve as a quote exterior, exterior area for assisted rescue, which is different than having.
No, the conversation was, I, I suspect, I suspect that she may have transcribed like some quickly scrawled notes and rescue might have looked like, or access might have looked like rescue, it's about assisted access, it was an assisted entry for ADA as an alternative that we discussed with her, as an alternative to having a code compliant round. For ADA access, so it, it may be the.
She, she turned it wrong.
Okay, so she turned it wrong, but, so it's a porch, it's going to be used for dining?
It, it's a deck that my understanding is contemplated for outdoor seating.
Okay.
If it's a deck for outdoor seating, I say no.
We're still getting bits and pieces of this and nothing from her, you know, we're gathering various information.
Yeah.
From my recollection of it. And that was, and the, there are steps that will be part of that, you know, on the one end.
Because they're raising the building, that's what steps to get into it.
But they, the drawings that we presented to us did not show the entire porch as being used for steps up to a huge building, my door.
Okay. Back to, back to the line here, Jeff Rebecca Ty, holding on Parry Street. Right now, on their, on the Pine Street side of the property, running along from east to west. It's about thirteen and a half feet, the property line is thirteen and a half feet off from the curb to the property line. Right now, there's a, a chain link fence which runs along there, which is on Village property. They want to take the fence down and put shrubberies and wanted to know how to go about that, or if they would have to put it on their property or, or, or what they could do there, they wanted, they want to remove the fence that's there.
From east to west on Pine Street?
It's on Pine Street, running along, along their property.
There's a hedge of roses there.
Yes, there is, yes.
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 They're my grandmother's roses.
Good memory.
Yes.
They are there, and that might be on their property or not. There's a, there's a hill that goes down and, and then there's, it's thirteen and a half feet.
Thirteen and a half, that's a lot of property.
Yeah, there's no sidewalk on that side.
No.
So it goes down on a steep slope, they want to, right now, there's a chain link fence they want to remove and plant shrubs. You want, I can get more information on what they actually have so that the roses aren't torn out and your hearts are broken.
Oh, no, 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 I don't care about the roses. The, the chain link fence, fence must be on the westernmost portion of it.
Runs, it runs parallel, it runs parallel with the property line, going, I think, unless there's only a little section of it.
But thirteen, thirteen and a half, why, that's big. And they, they, they don't want to buy it.
It comes down the hill, they just want to replace the fence, if they can't replace this, tear the fence out and if we don't let them put where the fence is, which is more advantageous kind of to them because it's on, on a better part of the hill, then, then they'll, you know, they'll print shrubs, they'll take it out and print shrubs closer on their property. They were asking because it, it would, I guess it would be easier or more aesthetically pleasing to have it where the fence is right now, maybe it's easier, so.
How do they know the fence is on Village property, is it that close to the curb?
They, they have a, a survey. And I measured off the survey and went up there and marked where it was.
So that's the survey there.
What's that?
That's the survey.
This is the survey, yes.
Because there's a lot of places in the village where we don't know where the line is.
This, I believe, is the fence going here unless.
Page two.
This is the curb.
Yep.
This is our property to there, which I guesstimated at thirteen and a half.
Okay. And they just want to remove the chain link fence which is down here?
I thought it ran along their property, I'll take a better look.
I'll take a, true.
Yeah, so, yeah, we got your writing by, take a look, you know, we'll get back to her, it's not urgent. Uh, okay, moving along quickly. Next, the wall documents are done, if you guys want to take a look at them, I'll leave here, Donald chopped them off today, so for the wall up on Main Street, the plan is to, and I have to coordinate with Jen, a couple of trees might have to come down. We want to bring the wall out a little bit so that we can put a foundation in and then remove the wall onto the new foundation. And the foundation is, is gravel, it's not like a solid masonry foundation. So what they have to do is dig, like in front of this, like come out three feet or two and a half feet somewhere in that area, dig, put a gravel foundation or a stone foundation, and then move the stone existing there, it'll be a face, reuse all the face stones and then backfill behind it so that the wall's three feet thick and that's like a solid masonry. It's like, you know, masonry rubble behind it and the face, you know, matches what's there as close as possible.
Do you have a price on this?
We do not have a, we don't, like, like Jason, we do not have a guesstimate on this. So we can, we can put it out to bid and, and get the number and decide not to do it, there's nothing that says we have to do it.
It's been, yeah, it's been like that for a long, long time, will Donald help us get the RFP done?
Yeah, everything's included here, everything that needs to be done.
Will there be any, currently there are steps that go from Main Street to at least two of the houses.
Right, there's two sets of steps, the one close to the west is, they, that's going to be eliminated and they agreed to that.
Okay.
The other one goes to the property also and they're leaving that.
So it would be a wall that would have steps in it?
No.
Oh.
The wall's going to go from the second set of steps on, on the eastern side, it will start there and then that's going to have a slight curve to move it out and it's going to go all the way down just before the monument and the bench down on the west side.
So it doesn't go down to?
Doesn't go to the corner or to that property corner. Where the, where the monument is, it's fairly, it's decent.
So in the line of priority projects, this falls sort of down here someplace, so.
This?
Yeah, this, I mean, after, after what?
I don't know, we can look at it, I mean, something has to be done.
Yeah, it's been like that for a long time, I don't think it's dangerous, it should be done.
Okay, well, I think we should put it out to bid.
Can I get the prices on it?
It's going to be a lot of money.
It sure is.
You don't let me stack the stuff, you don't know what to do.
So can I get an okay on, on putting this out the bid or putting an ad in the paper?
Is, putting an ad in the paper, asking for bids?
Yes.
So you need a bid package?
We have a bid package, everything's here.
Okay, yeah, yes, yep.
We just have to advertise. So I'll make a motion to put the rebuild project of the Main Sheet Wall. So I'll make a motion to, uh, put the, uh, rebuild project of the Main Street wall, uh, out to bid.
A second.
On favor?
Aye.
Do we have to do more than, um, notice in the PCNR? Do we have to notice more broadly than?
Yeah, I think we will, yeah, there's a, a one that we go on on the side. I'll talk to Jeff, if we don't get it done this week, yeah, we can just get the information. I think the last is, uh.
This is gonna be a short meeting?
This is a very short meeting.
That means you don't have one this week.
Only five, hundred, this is the last one.
Yeah.
Um, in discussing, uh, the different, um, the fee schedules for Mayor Park, Mayor's Park and, uh, Dockside.
Yeah.
Um, we wanted to have for special ticketed events, we wanted to, you know, uh, have both of them aligned so that we're charging the same amounts of money.
Or similar amounts of money.
Okay, well, similar isn't the same, if we're, what, what, what are we gonna have?
I, I don't.
Like right now, the Dockside, I mean, our fee schedule hasn't changed from the ones that we've been working with, which is twelve hundred dollars for a special event up to eight hours for the, for the eight hours a day.
Okay.
I think the, the, uh, Mayor's Park is a thousand, but they also have included in theirs of the amount for like someone to be on the property during the event at thirty-two dollars an hour, so.
They do?
Yes, they do, that's the one I, I've seen, or I just talked to Ruth Ann tonight.
I've, I've never seen anything like that.
I think that was the new fee schedule that they just did a couple of months ago, she said that to me today too, I didn't know that.
But, but if I look at the Dockside, uh, sorry, the, uh, Mayor's Park fee schedule, um, there, the, the deposit requirements are totally different than the deposit requirements for Dockside. And, and so they have to be brought into alignment as well. The, um, and, and it seems to me that the, I don't know that Mayor's Park has a per hour fee.
Yes, they do.
And what's, what is it?
It's the same as a, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, I must've been looking at a wrong, a lo- old agreement.
And two hundred and fifty dollars for setup day, just like ours, also.
Okay, but there were like fifty dollar things and?
Well, that's probably for the pavilion.
Yeah, I, I think we need to take a look at the new.
So the question is not to go into the, into the, into the weeds yet on that, but are we agreed that we wanna align those two?
Yes, totally.
As closely as possible, if not the same.
Totally.
Okay, the next question is, we, we had discussed this and, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we discussed not-for-profits down at Dockside, we decided regardless if you're a not-for-profit or a profit, if it's a ticketed event, that it would be the same cost.
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
We did. Mayor's Park, we wanna do the same thing also.
And Mayor's Park has always been sort of connected to, and there were different rates for village residents, town residents, um, et cetera, et cetera. We're going to give all of that up, are we gonna keep some of that, are we going to, um, I, I don't know, I mean.
Well, that, that's, that's the question they're asking, um, and John's here tonight, John, you know, wants to, you know, there's the one, the one that's evented, it's a for-profit and it, uh, and so, you know, the schedules are gonna hold for that, um, and we went over that, I think Ruth Ann went over that. The next, the other one is the KFC, which, you know, if you went by our schedule, Mayor's Park, it would cost them like thirty-seven hundred dollars or something because they wanna set up on a Thursday, um, they're not gonna use it on, or they're gonna use it Wednesday, I believe, Wednesday, they want to set up probably because of the tent size and whatever is gonna be in advance, so that would be Wednesday, so our fee schedule would be two fifty for that. Then that would also include since they're there Thursday, which would be all day, so that would be another fifteen, so, and then Friday, they wanted to use it for three, three hours for community night kind of thing, so that's seven hundred and fifty dollars. Then the next two nights, two days would qualify for the twelve hundred dollars, so all of this is adding up to a lot of money, I think, for a not-for-profit, so I'm not saying we shouldn't charge them, but I don't think, I think that's, uh, I, I think that's cost prohibitive and.
Hadn't we decided that if a lot of the, whatever the not-for-profit was, if a lot of their activities directly benefited the people of the village or something, we would give different consideration for them or?
Yeah, but I, I, I'm not sure we can go that way, there's a lot of not-for-profits that come through here, um, for different reasons. You know, the goat for the blind, the dogs and stuff will come through, um, the Knights Lions, uh, different organizations will come through and I, I don't think we can say, hey, well, if your money, you know, if your money comes back to the village, then it's one thing. If it's a not-for-profit, it's a not-for-profit, we had this discussion before.
Right.
As to how to determine, you know.
So one, one way, and I, you know, we have to kind of get this, I mean, we can lock in the date, we don't have to decide tonight, but I, I think we should think about that and the, and the total cost for like a not-for-profit and maybe it's residential not-for-profits. I mean, right now, someone could come in from anywhere if they're a not-for-profit and hold a, a big event there and according to our fee schedule, if we, you know, as it has been, it'd be like a hundred dollars or something, so. I mean, it, it's a lot, lot to undertake, I think, for the village, um, and, and to get into, so, you know, there should be some compensation, but, you know, again, if it's a not-for-profit, you know, for the most part, I'm sure it's going to good causes, so I don't think we should be charging in full, so, I don't know if it's half or, or less than that or whatever it is, so.
Was, wasn't there a discussion one time, there's, there's a not-for-profit and there's another termination of another?
Well, the Lions, for example, at the best of my knowledge, they are not a five oh one C three.
I'm not sure about the Lions, but.
I'm sure the Lions are not, are not a five oh one C three.
You know, so I think, I think we were talking about determining exactly if they are a not-for-profit or what.
What qualifies what?
Qualifies, I mean, that, we had this discussion and I don't remember what we ended up with and there was a difference. And as you say, like, you know, if the one is not a five oh one C three, they're definitely not-for-profit and there's another designation, I don't remember what it is, we were only to, I think, asked John about it?
They're, um, uh, the fire company is not a five oh one C three, but they are a not-for-profit. They're a five oh, I can't remember what their numbers and, and letters are.
The boat club's a C four.
Okay, which reminds me, but this is, what happened?
I put them off, there's some sort of, I put them off to, uh, the bridge.
Did you have something to contribute on?
Well, I was just gonna say that, um, the nonprofit, there are different, these different tax classifications of nonprofits, so you've got your C three, your C four, your C seven, you've, so there's a C nine and they have different descriptions and different specific, um, activities that they're permitted to engage in. So you might wanna, if that's, if you're looking for a standard, you could, you could, if, if you were looking for a standard that you could use, you might look at the tax classifications and the activities that fall under that, you know, if you were looking, if you wanted to build yourself some sort of a structure to apply to your fees and, you know, deciding fees.
Well, if we do, um, if we do a, um, a, a not-for-profit at Mayor's Park, we, if, if we wanna have similar agreements, then we should consider a not-for-profit at Dockside.
Yeah, I think, I think we should, we should.
I think we should keep this.
Yeah, I think if a not-for-profit wants to use something, they can have Mayor's Park. I think Dockside, maybe we wanna say if you're coming here, this is the fees, I mean, maybe we wanna differentiate, differentiate that way.
Which way?
Does a not-for-profit, if you wanna pay a not-for-profit fee, then you need to go to Mayor's Park. If you wanna, if you want Dockside, then you're gonna pay for fee, and I'm not sure of it.
I think the resident component is, should be a part of that decision-making, the residents. You know, Nikes at Columbus, you know, owns a building right next door, you know? So the, the, between a not-for-profit, you talk about not-for-profits coming from anywhere, wanting to use the facilities and that should probably be a price difference or a cost difference or fee difference, just like you're doing for a resident versus a non-resident. So if you gotta do the.
I would argue that actually that, that's a reason not to, because the not-for-profit that has property in the village isn't paying, uh, isn't contributing to the taxes that are, you know, the, the revenue stream. I mean, not that I'd be like, I, I feel like, oh yeah, there's value in having a local organization, I just think that if you're looking.
You should be paying taxes on your building next door.
Okay, well, can we, uh, think about that and then maybe, uh, next Tuesday come up then, decide on what, if, you know, some thoughts on, on how we could structure the, you know, your spark. I, I, I don't think we can discriminate in different ways, like, you know. Like, okay, we like that not-for-profit, we don't like what they're for, they can, you know, or whatever, but.
Can we get from Ruth Ann their latest?
Yeah, we'll, I'll get that.
Application for an application, so we can.
Jeff should have it, no?
Yeah.
What just says Jeff sent it out?
And I sent out, I don't know, they keep changing so much.
John, were you at the Knights meeting last night?
I was, yes.
And did, what did they decide for July?
I think we're, uh, a little worn out and with all the different events, I think we're gonna have to decline your offer to come and help form the food, it's just, uh, having a tough time getting volunteers, we experienced it at our St. Patty's Day dinner and, um, so volunteering is, uh, is, uh, reducing down and, uh, it's difficult. You know, it's also a weekend and stuff, you know, so there's a lot of people wanna have their own barbecue, so.
July fourth.
Oh, we can fill that in easy enough, yeah, we can fill that in easy enough with food, we just didn't wanna have other people that were gonna be conflicting.
Yeah, we thank you for offering it to us, we're ready to, thanks.
So who do you want me to look at next?
What's that?
Who do you want me to look at next?
Um, well, you know, we can, we can talk to the fire companies.
Yeah.
Well, if they, uh, we can ask North Inland, I'd ask the Cold Spring and I'd ask the boat club if they wanna sell sausage and peppers, they wanna sell hamburgers or hot dogs. And if they don't, I don't know else we have, I don't know if wealth is in town, but that's, like, uh, they used to do it and, uh, if not, then we, we could, you know, we could have vendors come in again. I'm sure, uh, Angelina's, uh, you know, they came with their taco truck, we can definitely get a couple of people.
Reach out to the boosters.
Okay, whatever, yeah, I mean, whoever. I'm gonna be local, locals, let's see what they want. Anything else? Anything else from the audience? Like a motion to leave?
I would second the motion towards your end.
Oh, in favor?
Aye.
Aye.